I don't know if I'm saying anything, I just want to say that I'm very excited to be here. I understand how important a role that I will play and I will take it very seriously and work very hard. And I plan on being here for a very long time, if you guys will have any thoughts. So thank you very much.
We're welcome, we're welcome. Next, we have the administrative, or excuse me tonight, administrative office of office. So we have newly elected board members to swear into this evening. We have Lisa Schultz, who her term will be ending December 31st of 2022. Then we have Craig Watson, April LeBarre, and Tim Lefka, with their term ending December 31st of 2026. So, Mrs. Novak, would you please administer the oath of office?
Yes. Okay, so I'm gonna start with Lisa, which her terms are different. This is the oath of office for LaPierre Community School Board of Education for the term ending December 31st, 2022. Do you accept the position of member of the Board of Education of LaPierre Community Schools?
I do.
Are you qualified, are you a qualified school elector of LaPierre Community Schools?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, alright, and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of LaPierre Community Schools according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Thank you, congratulations. Alright, so are we signing now or? Wait, wait, okay. Alright, and this is for April, Craig, and Tim, April, and Craig, okay? So I'll ask, ask a question and then I'll just say it again. This is the oath of office for LaPierre Community School Board of Education for the term ending December 31st, 2026. Cheers guys, here we go. Do you accept the position of member of the Board of Education of LaPierre Community Schools?
I will.
Thank you. Are you qualified, are you a qualified school elector of LaPierre Community Schools?
I am.
I am.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of LaPierre Community Schools according to the best of your ability?
I will.
I will.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Right on your forehead, right on your forehead.
For those watching on the livestream, what these newly elected members are doing is signing a notary and mortgaging their home because you have collateral for this very unique and powerful position.
Thank you, Mrs. Novak, welcome after your last board. We appreciate you being such great volunteers.
And I would say that you know that probably set a world record for the most swearing ends in one, one setting.
I think so.
That'd be a world record in board homes, right?
So we're gonna move on to the organizational business of the agenda. First is the election of board officers and appointment of school staff for 2021. So we will begin with nominations for president.
I would like to nominate Summer Putnam for president of the school board.
I'll say it.
Okay. Mrs. Putnam has been nominated for president by Dr. Watson and seconded by Mrs. Novak. Mrs. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Haggel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mr. Lefka?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next, we have nominations for secretary.
I'll nominate Mrs. Novak for secretary.
Okay, so Mrs. Novak has been nominated for secretary by Mr. Haggel and seconded by Mr. Lefka. Mrs. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Haggel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mr. Lefka?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, thank you, Lisa. Next, we have nominations for vice president.
I'll nominate for president.
I'd like to nominate Craig Watson for vice president.
I'll say him then.
Okay, so I have, uh, Dr. Watson has been nominated for vice president by Mrs. Schultz and seconded by Mrs. LeBarre. Mrs. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Haggel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mr. Lefka?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries.
Exercise's time now.
Congratulations. Okay, next, we have nominations for treasurer. Um, our practice has been to have the assistant superintendent for business and operations serve as treasurer for the board.
I'd like to nominate Mark Rader to be our treasurer.
Okay. Mr. Rader has been nominated for treasurer by Dr. Watson and seconded by Mrs. Novak. Mrs. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Haggel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mr. Lefka?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Next is the appointment of recording secretary. So, we are recommending that Mary Moss were named the recording secretary for the Board of Education.
I nominate that Mary Moss, the assistant for the Board of Education Superintendent, be appointed to serve as recording secretary for Board of Education needs.
I'll support that.
Okay. I have a motion, Mrs. Novak, in support of Mr. Haggel. Mrs. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Haggel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mr. Lefka?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next is the appointment of board committees. So, um, we are recommending continuing with the board committee structure with the following committees: Finance, Operations, Students, Advocacy and Communication, Technology, Learning, or Teaching, Learning and Technology, and Personnel. The Legislative ADPOP Committee will continue to be utilized on an as many basis. Do I have a motion?
I propose that the Board of Education be authorized to appoint board committee members and chairpersons to the following committees for 2021: Finance and Operations, Students, Advocacy and Communication, Teaching, Learning and Technology, and Personnel. The board president will also be authorized to appoint members and chairpersons to the Legislative ADPOP Committee.
Seconded.
Okay, Mrs. Novak, motion, Mrs. Novak in support of Dr. Watson. Mrs. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. Haggel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Mr. Lefka?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. So I think I've spoken to each of you about the committees and, um, the suggested committees for you. Um, I'll send it out this week, if there's any concerns or questions, just let me know. Okay? So that concludes the organizational business portion of our conference this evening. So, Mr. President, would you introduce our presenting pool?
Guys, thank you very much, President, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Bob Downey and member of his staff, who present for representing Murphy Elementary on Board Goal Number Two. Mr. Downey?
Thank you. Um, I guess first I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to come speak open about some of the great things happening at Murphy. Uh, I also need to thank, like Mr. Waters already said, um, Crystal White from the LaPierre ISD who's supported not only the district, but also now are building at Murphy through the district's school process as well as building process that my building learning can encourage. So, um, we understand that's, our time is limited and so in effort to keep, um, myself on track as well as on time.
So the focus of our board of education is number two, that we're born, that we're in Board Goal Number A, which are on slide here. But I have a few terms that are, uh, both, uh, that are part of what we've been talking about. What is it that we're going to make sure that we have all these structural requirements in classrooms every day that are supported by professional development provided for our staff that are focused on capable, accessible, structural practices. I'll talk a little bit about all of those essential structural practices in this slide. Basically, when we're developing our curriculum planning for our staff, we're going to very similar classes, they're teaching, they're involving classes for students in class, um, which involves obviously knowing where your students are at, where our staff is currently at, knowing where we want them to be, whether it be United States and goal, and trying to be a learning process that's, you know, years there. For us, when it comes to involving, again, appropriate professional development teachers, it, it starts with building these essential structural practices, which are, um, basically the culmination, um, of some work, uh, collaborative work by educators from around Michigan, um, from various districts, various schools, um, that identify, um, specific strategies, not that pushing through at the building level, district level, but more importantly, what pushing through at classroom level on a daily basis. Again, verify to make sure that we're really on top of instruction, that's gonna help the group towards growth. So, they are essential instructional practices. Each activity has its ten most important strategies, there are goals and items that, uh, explore quite the depth, but again, they're focused on what we should be doing at classroom on a daily basis. There's an activity that's focused on the K2, uh, collaboration involved or not collaboration. So we use these research-based problems as a basis for our professional development and we select them, um, by, um, lots of research that we, that we did in the building. Some of those, for example, came from DMC and our structural rounds, which are invaluable, you know, collaboration between buildings and institution and staff, identify, um, you know, where we are currently at, where we wanna be, how we're gonna get to all that, so it, um, on a collaborative basis, because the next game for the thing was running called Herby, which means every classroom, all of our students are, again, following that, alright, so education is, it is, uh, involved whole people, right, and staff, both of those students, and students learn master learning, they are involved or engaged in the work, right, so, um, there's this somehow, you're like, well, they have to get on that line, you can't do it for them, so, that seems sort of like being in a process, it's a little bit kind of like a scene set up for all of the issue of the day. Making decisions about learning, therefore, being more engaged in their learning, uh, that's how we're, for the better, for the spot, right? So anticipation, um, very simple means, um, because of what's happening, you know, this basic instruction also factor the decision about which of the essential practices to focus on as well. You're difficult to see on a set of practice number seven, um, you don't want to lose sight of that. Building on what we've learned as we move forward, um, but just running the turnover to, uh, there's a book that taken to where we are at, essential practices four and five, how we use also the type of reading cards to identify those, uh, essential practices as, as our currents, uh, areas of, of these, so, uh, we'll turn over.
So, the video actually started a little before I wanted to, because I wanted to make mention that at your desk, it's already provided three different handouts, one was the presentation itself, and the other two are those essential structural practices that, that refers to. One is the K2 document, the other one is the K5 document. Uh, we're not going to go through those documents in their entirety, but, uh, at your leisure, you can take, take a peek at those, you can see that, the documents, uh, do provide a lot of guidance, but also a lot of freedom in terms of how we accomplish those things. But those are research-based strategies, strategy that we should be using in classrooms, not just at Murphy, not just in LaPierre, but at us, at Michigan, in order, in order to make sure that, again, our students are truly receiving high-quality instruction that's designed to improve the skills we're good at. So, at this point, I will turn over.
So I have a cool video, he just had me, so I apologize. Um, I'm Crystal White, I'm the, um, literacy consultant from the ISD I've been working with some of your schools in Murphy for the last few years. Um, so basically, um, a couple of years ago, Murphy identified, um, two essential practices that they really wanted to, um, hone in on, and it was essential practice one, which was motivation and engagement, um, and student center learning, and then essential practice number seven, which was vocabulary, and, um, they worked through that with, um, coaching, professional development, and that's not in one way like I said, but they were ready this year to kind of move on to, to a new goal. And so, um, through, um, instructional rounds and, um, observations and teacher input, they decided that, um, as a team, they, the teachers wanted to, um, target essential practice number four. So, some of the essential practices are the same, no matter the upper E levels that you're looking at, and some of them are a little bit different. So essential practice number four is different, um, from upper L to lower L. So, lower L really wanted to dig into phonological awareness, which is just basic things like, um, like rhyming and, um, you know, identifying like hearing sounds and words, and then upper L, um, they didn't necessarily have a need for that, but they wanted to target fluency, so kids, um, they don't have to read, but they just need to take all of their, um, reading skills and be able to, you know, read the text fluently. Uh, what you see in front of you, it looks really complicated, um, but it's actually the cognitive model of reading, which is presented here, and I pointed out, um, these are all the components, um, that work together in the reading process. And if you look at the end where the star is, that's our end goal, sort of end goal for, um, for students is just to be able to read and to comprehend, understand what they read, no matter if they're in ELA class or if they're in science and social studies, they need to be able to comprehend. And so in order to get to that goal, um, some teachers, they decided like, um, they, they wanted to, to build that phonological awareness with their lower L students, and then the upper L decided that their students still need some more work in fluency. So that's why we took those two different components, which comes up to, um, their essential practice number four, and that's what, um, we worked on the first half of the year. Okay, so essential practice number four, for, um, for P3, which is really just lower L, um, it's things like building, um, phonological awareness. Um, teachers promote phonological awareness development, um, particularly things like, um, phonemic awareness through, um, explicit explanation, um, demonstration, playing with sounds and words, um, engaging in studies of words, typically things that you would normally do in a preschool setting and in kindergarten setting, but oftentimes we have students that still need that in first grade and in second grade, and maybe as an intervention beyond that. So that's why we decided to hone in on those really foundational skills, because if kids don't have that, there's no way they're gonna be able to grasp, be able to read fluently, and then ultimately are going to comprehend the text. And then on the other end, upper L, they really wanted to focus on fluency and stamina, so that kids are gonna be able to read, you know, read the text without suddenly chopping, and if you're, um, if you're reading fluently, ultimately that's gonna help them, um, understand the text. So I'm gonna show you some things, um, that we talked about the first half of the year. Tammy and I, we split up, so I was able to provide a differentiated, um, teacher professional development. So I took the upper L teachers and she took the lower L teachers. So I focused on fluency and stamina, um, the third group, fifth grade, and, um, we started with a discussion of fluency and we wanted to, um, kind of throw out that misconception that fluency is just way more than reading words quickly. So sometimes kids think that they're reading fluently and reading sexy again, that's not the case. So we focused on accuracy, which just means, um, when kids are reading, they're, um, reading the words with, uh, with too many errors, um, and then they can make an error, they try to go back and correct their mistakes. Automaticity is just kind of reading words, uh, like, like you're speaking and conversational, that's that conscious effort. When we think of a first grader beginning to read, they have a super conscious effort because they have to pay attention and they have to focus word by word, but we want our upper L students to kind of get past that. And then the last thing is proximity, that's just like changing your voice with the intonation. Um, you know, you're, you're reading with dialogue and, um, you are, you see punctuation, you're kind of, you know, changing your voice like somebody, somebody is having a conversation in the meeting. Um, there's a lot of research out there that links fluency to higher levels of comprehension, so if kids can read fluently, they're more likely to be able to understand and comprehend the text. So some of the things that we did, I mean, we talked about a lot of resources and activities, um, for fluency and stamina, and I really like working with teachers on this one, because I put a little picture of low-y through, because all the things that we talked about, like, many of them were not, like, brand new to teachers. It was ideas that maybe they have tried before, but like, forgotten about. Um, just little tiny tweaks in their instruction that they were able to be like, oh yeah, that would be really easy to implement. Or yeah, I do that sometimes, but now I know it's gonna get me like more bang for my buck, so I'm gonna do it more consistently. Um, we also tried to implement things like if we have to go to a virtual study, what are some fluency and stamina activities that teachers can do with their students if they have to teach virtually? So this essential practice is very easy to implement virtually as well. This can be done in a small group study, if you just have a few kids that you need to pull together to work on fluent, to work on non-fluency, or if you want to teach a whole class lesson, or if you also have to teach, um, virtual. We talked about things about the importance of listening to, um, models of fluent reading, so teachers, even at the upper L, they still should be reading to their kids, their students. So that's really important, that helps to build the fluency in the students. Repeated reading, so kids are, um, they're reading a small, a short excerpt of text more than once, that actually, you know, builds fluency and ultimately builds reading comprehension, so they should be doing that. Um, fun things like reader's theater and reading scripts and plays, research supports that, so all of that should still be, um, integrated in the classroom. We also talked about, um, parent and partner reading, so kids, they should be, um, you know, grouped together in various ways, partners with similar reading abilities and then also high-level reading abilities, um, so research supports that also. Um, kind of going along with last year's goal for Murphy, the essential practice number one, the motivation and engagement, we talked about how to increase reading stamina, so you start up here, and kids might only be able to read independently for 10 minutes, but throughout the year, you want to build that, that, that reading stamina, and so you kind of get, um, the students involved and they set their own goals, like as a class, their own independent goals, for how many minutes do I wanna read? Did I meet my goal yet? Well, how many pages did I read? So research supports that too. Okay, um, well, Tammy, take over, and now you wanna keep calling? Sorry?
Get up there, Tammy.
Okay, so I had the pleasure of, uh, working with the K2 teachers, um, the first part of this year, and we focused in on phonological awareness. So our first part of our, um, speed together was really discussing what phonological awareness is, and most of us know what new or know what phonological awareness is, but, um, we discussed, uh, more in depth and bringing it to their attention that it's a great foundation for, um, students to have in their instruction every day for every student. And then we discussed why phonological awareness is so important. Those students at that young age need the foundation, um, to become a better reader, and it, the research has said that, um, when they have their phonological awareness built in place, that, um, they don't struggle as much in, um, secondary and higher. So they have a higher reading achievement, and it just builds, builds their blocks for students to decode the words, um, and they don't struggle as much. So then after, uh, after we discussed, um, what and why, um, we tried a couple of things out in this classroom, and then they came back and, and we discussed, um, how it, how it went. So then we dug a little bit deeper and we discussed, uh, we, we shared what type of activities we did in class. Um, and then I, I brought this up because, um, every, every classroom has smaller instruction, uh, for reading, and we use Jan Richardson model for smaller. Um, and this is a companion book that goes with, uh, the Jan Richardson smaller construction, and I felt that this was a way that we could get verb study, word finding, phonological awareness into our daily instruction of the day. So this, um, provides activities that go right with their smaller construction on a daily basis. So every teacher was provided with a book, um, to supplement their smaller construction. And then you get Crystal White. So we, um, at the very beginning of the year, we actually, um, highlighted two essential practices that Murphy wanted to target as a goal this year, it was essential practice number, um, four and then number five. So number five, um, the main title is explicit instructions in letter-stable relationships, and it's a misconception that when you hear that, you think, oh, I can learn some sounds, that's just what kindergarten is. But it actually goes way more in depth, and that's how, um, students learn to decode words, it's more like teaching them phonics. So this is like a natural progression, we already, um, we already taught, um, the phonological awareness, which is like a very basic foundational skill, if you look at the cognitive model of reading, and then the, on the other end was the fluency, so we kind of had like this little, um, nugget in the middle that we wanted to make sure that you would hone in on. So it was like, was a natural progression for lower L to kind of bulk themselves up, okay? Kids have all these phonological awareness, they know like their sounds and words, now let's teach them to read. So we need to move on to that decoding, that's like word knowledge. And then, um, upper L, they spent a lot of time, um, learning about, um, fluency techniques for students. So what about kids that aren't there yet, that when they come to, um, maybe a multi-soletic word, or they come to a tricky word, they don't, they might just guess what the word is, they don't actually have those phonics skills. So we need to kind of backtrack this a tiny bit, just to make sure that we kind of shore up those phonics and decoding skills. So if, um, just to clarify, phonics is the ability to understand the relationship between written letters and the signs that they represent. It's kind of like, um, decoding, when you come to a word, you are, um, kind of, uh, settling out the words, or setting out the letters and then blending it together, and then it's also encoding. And encoding is when you take the samples and you get it down on paper, so you're, you're reading and you're writing the words, they're kind of like reciprocal. Um, and phonics is important in a lot of ways, um, of course, being able to read unknown words and recognize words in word parts, that's so important for kids to read. so important for kids to read. And that was in first grade, sometimes, you know, kids start in kindergarten and first grade and they're already behind, so they have kind of holes in their phonics and their word recognition skills, which is why we decided to include upper L in here too, because surely they still have kids that need that decoding. Kids need to be able to quickly read words often, or better put, often in books, those are called high frequency verbs, it's words that are just repeated over and over again. But we don't want them, when they come to them, to try to sound aloud words like buh, 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 buh. So that's what we're going to hit at essential number five as well with teachers. And then also phonics is important because kids need to be able to quickly and easily read words, which allows, without thinking, because it allows kids to take their thinking and use their comprehension to understand what they're reading. We don't want them to just focus on, you know, the print, the words and the text, they have to actually be understanding what they're reading. So as for a rundown, having kids read words, and we're going to talk about some of these things when we meet with teachers. So we already had covered essential number four, so these are our plans for things that we're going to, we're going to talk about with teachers when we begin essential number five next month. But to identify words, good readers do things like they primarily use the letters in the words, so they need to be able to decode, they don't just go to the picture all the time, they pay attention to where the letters are positioned in the words and which letters are around them. And so in other words, they decode the words, they don't just guess or only think about what makes sense. Research shows the biggest strategy that kids use and should use with kids, they look at the letters and they decode them. So after decoding a word, a new word, typically multiple times, readers kind of map of the word like in their brain, and then that finally allows for that fluent word recognition, which leads on to the next step of the cognitive reading, cognitive model of reading, is being able to read fluently. But, right, Tammy, finish and talk a little bit more about kind of our plan for the rest of the year to focus on essential number five with teachers.
Yeah, so this, we haven't had PD on essential five yet, but this is our vision on where we'd like to go for the rest of the year. So we'd like to start with this spoken sequence of phonics and take the teacher through the sequence of how to teach the phonics. So within that, teachers will be verbally precise when teaching phonics, that's very important. And it will also be taught systematically in relation to the students' needs according to careful assessments and observations. So we really want to look at the reading and writing assessment, so that can drive our instruction. And then while we are teaching, monitor the progress, so we know where to go next. Along with the spoken sequence of phonics, we also want to address high frequency, frequency words. These words are taught to students as well, and they're not just numbers. So providing an explicit instruction and applying that within acts.
And now, Mr. Downey is going to explain our lightning report.
Yeah, I'm going to first really just two main points. One is that, it may seem sort of surprising to any of us that when we found our kids back in the classroom face to face, that we realized that there were greater numbers of students that had greater needs that we needed to address. And so getting back to basics, right, making sure that the foundation and well, and our instruction is present, is kind of like the focus of our PD, our professional development. It's why we selected the essential practices, four and five, is a great way to kind of take the next step on what we had already been focusing on. The second part about, the second point I want to make is, the board look board is collaboration. We actually collaborated and borrowed this idea from Lynch Elementary School, which we think is perfect, especially in this day and age. Right, so we're faced right now with some pretty unique circumstances, we're not certain how long it'll be, we hope to be face to face for the remainder of the school year, but if that is or is not the case, we want to be prepared for, how do we continue to collaborate with each other? You know, teaching is no longer teaching in silos, we need to be working together, you know, sharing our ideas. And one way for us to be able to accomplish that is through our board like we're looking for. So what we created, some of what Lynch had created, that already created and have been working with, is an opportunity for teachers to look at the essential practices that we have been focusing on, have focused on, and are continuing to focus on, and either look at it through one, two different lenses. One, I really think, I would like to see this essential practice, this decision strategy in action. How can I accomplish that? Would like, look for it, put your name down as this is something that I'm interested in seeing. And then the second lens of that is a teacher thinking back about a train of frequency, what they're doing in the classroom, and saying, this is something I'm going to feel comfortable with, something that I think I can share with another teacher, and this becomes a perfect match for our results. And if we can accomplish making that match during the school day, before school, after school, those are things that people, our kids are helping them to work out, because we feel that's important for their professional growth and for the academic growth of our students. And so with that, I'd like to wrap off with that kind of point for, you know, what we're doing with our professional development plan at Murphy, that's why it's important. Questions?
Just, I don't know if it's obvious or not, but to match create a big problem when you're talking phonetics and phonics and trying to sound out words for kids, like, they watch how people talk, where their lips go, how the, you know what I mean, like, how to make those sounds? Is that creating an additional problem for you guys?
Yes, it's not just here, it's around the county, state.
Right. But, yeah, does that mean they kind of mimic what we do, right?
Absolutely.
If they're not seeing how you're making the sound, they don't want to make it, you know, so how do we get around that?
We have purchased clear masks, especially like in our speech department for our speech gaps, and that's still an issue even with just the clear mask, because it's still prevents a barrier, fogged up, number one. And number two, the kids still want to be able to see it, and sometimes in the olden days, we could kind of manipulate, push it out, show how to produce a certain sound in a certain way. So we've attempted to find ways to do it, but it is very important for them to be able to see, feel, thought, to know.
Just another.
Yeah.
Holy cow.
Just overall, as a point of understanding, especially to our new board members, each presentation by one of our buildings is on one of our three stated board goals. And what you'll see, the different variations in the buildings, is simply how those goals come to life in these buildings. But Mr. Downey makes a great point, especially with how we look for here at the end of it, that how board goal number two is manifesting itself at Murphy is very similar to how it's manifesting itself in the elementary school. So what you're actually hearing is what does board goal look like, especially in particular reference to these essential practices? It doesn't do us a lot of good as a district, if the only people doing that work are in one building. So there is a considerable level of collaboration, a lot of it due to Krista and her, to the ISD, connecting our staff. So what's happening at Murphy, if it's working, isn't done in a silo. It's like they saw what Lynch was doing with his look board idea and collaboratively stole it, right, because it works, and it works.
It's a mark.
Hey Bob, when you put it on a bar boy's clock, knocking on his look board, it's no longer a bar. But as you, as you become more familiar with the actual goals themselves written on paper, every single month, you'll hear a different example from a different building, how that board goal comes to life in their building, but always know in the back of your mind, that's almost, I don't want to use the word identical, but that's discounting the culture of the individual building, but very similarly, these teachers who help our learning coaches are collaborating with one another to steal the best practices from each other. So that's, there's some redundancies here, but that's done very, very intentionally.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming, Mrs. Curry, Mrs. White, Mr. Downey. First of all, standing with your ISD board is awesome to see the collaboration, so I'm excited to see you up here. Crystal, that's just awesome that we have that partnership, and I'm really excited about that, how we work together. I think what was interesting to me to say about that, and some of us that were in the private world at one time, was that was the one thing that really shocked me about education, was you actually share? Like, you know, everybody is so willing to share, like, it's not really stealing, right? It's called sharing. So I think that's important to note too, that it is, it's a practice. I mean, in education, we are very good about sharing our ideas, that collaboration is just what works, makes it work. My other point is, you said it, and I appreciate it that you guys are working this day in the classroom, I love that you said, we see the gaps, and I think that's really important to recognize too. So that just makes me so happy, as a future professor of these students, that we have individuals like you that are really working to try to fill those gaps that haven't occurred, and I just thank you so much for that.
As a parent of a Murphy child, I would just like to share with you how excited my son was yesterday, when he came home from school and said that he was put into a book club with three or four other students, and he named them all off, and I asked about how excited he was, and he said, oh, it's great, I get to read with my friends, and just the overall excitement that my child, and I'm sure all of the children in the district are, to know that they're back face to face with dedicated educators such as yourself, and the devotion that all of us share, and we thank you all for all of the work that you are doing. From a parent, just to hear it from a parent's perspective and not a board of education member, I just, I thank you for everything that you're doing, all of you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions?
I mean, I want to say thank you also for coming and sharing with us, and honestly, this is my, I mean, I love all the meeting, I love all the tools that we have, and how we can break it down for each of our students, and the small centered group to group them together to help them each other part, that's amazing. But this to me is even more amazing. Working in the auto industry, we do this, it's called lessons learned, we share, we make sure globally we're all doing the same thing. So I'm very excited to see that it's migrating to all the other schools, and you guys are carrying some more activities. This is the classes we're going to learn, so really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is public comment, but I don't see any kind of public comment for this evening, so we will go ahead into action items. First, we have consent briefing, the approval of meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2020 regular meeting. Is there any item that you wish to be reviewed by this? Okay, hearing none?
I'll make one for the reason that you waved and threw that presentation.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Knobla, supported by Mr. Edel. Mrs. Knobla?
Aye.
Mr. Edel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. Lavar?
Aye.
Mr. Littke?
Aye.
Mrs. Putman says aye, motion carries. Next, we have extended continuity of learning plan.
Make a motion that we approve the extended continuity of learning plan.
Motion.
Several.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Watson, supported by Mr. Littke. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Mrs. Knobla?
Aye.
Mr. Edel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. Lavar?
Aye.
Mr. Littke?
Aye.
Mrs. Putman says aye, motion carries. That concludes the action item portion. Let's go to board member communication topics. Anything, anybody has a statement?
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to our new board members, diversity included. It's kind of neat, exciting, it's different, it is our new normal. We're worried about this being new normal, so is this. With as many new board members and taking over and starting over is kind of how it feels, and we've got to kind of sludge our way through the new normal, and this is the board group that's going to do it, because we're in the thick of things. By the time our term's end, we should hopefully be through those things, so we're the ones who are going to forge this path and put some things in place that will work if, hopefully ever and ever, this ever happens again. So good luck to us all, and congratulations, and looking forward to some great years on the board of board. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you too, I'm excited about this team, I think we're going to accomplish a lot together. We all have wonderful assets of agreement to the board, second, we'll do a great job. And secondly, I just want to say that I'm really excited to have all of our kids in the classroom. I know kids are excited to be there, and I know the teachers are, so just cross our fingers, we can keep them there for the future.
So with that, Mr. Sumerkin and Watson, I hand it over to you.
Thank you, Anna Presidente, just a few quick comments, welcome to our newest members, I really echo on second Dr. Watson's comments, it's a new team, new era in L C S, and looking forward to working with this group, very much so. You would think, Mrs. Schultz, as a recently elected board member, that you're the most famous person in your house, but I was reminded today by reading the latest edition of the County Press Year in Review, that your son Ben was the youth citizen of the year for 2020, so you are the second most famous person. How bad I gave him a shout out, tell Michael, I forgot about that, got the reminder today. Want to thank Bob and your staff, and inviting Crystal to be a part of the presentation, that was kind of a unique twist, we haven't had yet, but that's a really cool perspective to bring in. Obviously, someone is connected to appear, but in her role as an ISD consultant, that was, that was great, thank you. And then very quickly, one wish, a special happy birthday to one of our teachers, Niti Badir, so happy birthday, Niti Badir, watch. That's it, that's all you got?
Thank you. Okay, next we will go into a closed session, so.
I'm moving, the board moving to closed session to discuss negotiations.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Edel, supported by Mrs. Knobla. Mrs. Knobla?
Aye.
Mr. Edel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mrs. Schultz?
Aye.
Mrs. Lavar?
Aye.
Mr. Littke?
Aye.
Mrs. Putman says aye, motion carries.
Right, be in meeting room C.
Meeting room C.
For our closed session.